Good morning, everyone. I now call this meeting of the Executive Council to order. As the Chair of the Executive Council, I've determined that the requirements for Minnesota Statute Section 13 Delta Point 015 have been met and will conduct this meeting via interactive technology. Because this meeting is being conducted via interactive technology, all votes will be counted with a roll call vote. At this time, I'd call for a motion to approve the draft minutes at the Executive Council meeting held on March 25th, May 23rd, June 26th, and June 30th.
So moved.
I now call a roll call vote of each member to state their vote. Auditor Blaha?
Aye.
Attorney General Ellison?
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Flanagan?
Aye.
Secretary Simon?
Aye.
And I, Governor Walz, vote in favor of the motion. The motion carries and the minutes are approved. I would now recognize MNB Assistant Commissioner Jennifer Hasmer to present a request for approval of collateral for state funds. You are recognized Assistant Commissioner.
Great, thank you, Governor, and good morning to members of the Executive Council. For the record, I'm Jennifer Hasmer, Assistant Commissioner at Minnesota Management and Budget. So this agenda item is requesting the approval of new collateral used to secure state funds on deposit at 14 of the state's banks. Executive Council approval is required by Minnesota Statutes Section 9 Point 031, Subdivisions 2 and 3. The collateral listed on your memo represents both new collateral and the replacement of previously approved collateral that is maturing. I'm requesting your approval of this agenda item and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Assistant Commissioner. Is there any discussion regarding the approvable collateral? Hearing none, I'd call for a motion to approve the request?
So moved.
I now call a roll call vote. Auditor Blaha?
Aye.
Attorney General Ellison?
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Flanagan?
Aye.
Secretary Simon?
Aye.
And I, Governor Walz, vote in favor of the motion. The motion carries, the request is approved. I would once again recognize Assistant Commissioner Hasmer to present a request for designation of state community depository accounts. You are recognized Assistant Commissioner.
Great, thank you again, Governor. So this item is a request to designate seven community bank accounts as depositories for state funds as required by Minnesota Statutes Section 9 Point 031, Subdivision 1. These accounts are located in communities with more than one bank and were competitively bid earlier this year. They will be used to deposit fees and payments to the state until the funds are swept into the state's main bank account in St. Paul. These contracts will be established for a term through June 30th of 2030. I'm asking that you approve these accounts as state depositories today and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Assistant Commissioner. Is there any question regarding the depository accounts? Hearing none, I'd call for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Now call a roll call vote. Auditor Blaha, how do you vote?
Aye.
Attorney General Ellison?
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Flanagan?
Aye.
Secretary Simon?
Aye.
And I, Governor Walz, vote in favor of the motion. The motion carries, the request is approved. Is there any further discussion from members of the Executive Council? Hearing none, I'd call for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Roll call vote on the motion. Auditor Blaha?
Aye.
Attorney General Ellison?
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Flanagan?
Aye.
Secretary Simon?
Aye.
And I, Governor Walz, vote in favor of the motion. The ayes have it, the motion carries. This meeting of the Executive Council is adjourned.
See you later.
I now call the meeting of the Land Exchange Board to order. As Chair of the Land Exchange Board, I have determined that the requirements of Minnesota Statutes 13 Delta Point 015 have been met and we will conduct this meeting via interactive technology. Because the meeting is being conducted via interactive technology, all votes will be a roll call vote. I'd now call for a motion to approve the minutes of the March 21st and August 18th, 2025 meetings.
So moved.
Now call a roll call vote. Auditor Blaha?
Aye.
Attorney General Ellison?
Aye.
And I, Governor Walz, vote in favor of the motion. The motion carries, the minutes are approved. I'd now like to recognize U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Supervisory Realty Specialist, Luke Anderson, to present a request for approval of certified easement acquisitions. Supervisor Anderson, you are recognized.
Governor and members of the board, thank you and good morning. For the record, I am Luke Anderson, Realty Supervisor with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. May I draw your attention to the first page behind Tab 2? The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service requests authorization to purchase 380.24 acres of habitat easements on private property in the counties listed below. All proposed acquisitions have been certified by the respective counties. In closing, we have... We request approval for these acquisitions to move forward. Thank you for your time and I stand for questions.
Thank you, Specialist Anderson. Any discussion on the easement acquisitions? Hearing none, I'd call for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Now call a roll call vote. Auditor Blaha?
Aye.
Attorney General Ellison?
Aye.
And I, Governor Walz, vote in favor of the motion. The ayes have it, the motion carries, the request is approved. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Any further discussion from the Land Exchange Board? Hearing none, I'd call for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Roll call vote. Auditor Blaha?
Aye.
Attorney General Ellison?
Aye.
And I, Governor Walz, vote in favor of the motion. The ayes have it, the motion carries, this meeting is adjourned. I now call the meeting of the State Board of Investments to order. As Chair of the State Board of Investments, I've determined that the requirements of Minnesota Statutes 13 Delta Point 015 have been met and this meeting will be conducted via interactive technology. Because this meeting is being conducted via interactive technology, all votes will be counted with a roll call vote. I would now call for a motion to approve the draft minutes of the March 21st meeting.
So moved.
Now call a roll call vote. Auditor Blaha?
Aye.
Attorney General Ellison?
Aye.
Secretary Simon?
Aye.
And I, Governor Walz, vote in favor of the motion. The motion carries, the minutes are approved. I would now like to recognize Executive Director Schertz to report on the SBI Performance Summary and the Executive Director's Administrative Report. Executive Director Schertz, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board Members. Want to make sure that you can hear me. Good morning, my name's Jill Schertz. I'm the Executive Director and Chief Investment Officer of the Minnesota State Board of Investment. It's an honor and a privilege to serve in this role. I'll be briefed today as we have a very full agenda. First, turning to performance, as you can see on the screen before you, we're pleased to report that the combined funds returned a 10.9% net of investment management fee return for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. Looking forward to through September 30th for the new fiscal year, positive performance has continued with 4.9% investment return reported for that period, net of all investment management fees. The combined funds ended the fiscal year with $101.2 billion of assets, an increase in assets from investment returns of $5.8 billion in the fourth quarter alone. Looking across all of our mandates, the SBI ended the fiscal year with $155.9 billion of assets under management. As reflected on the screen, when we look across every meaningful time period, the combined funds has performed well against both its composite benchmark and each of its other long-term performance objectives. As you can also see, this is reflected in our relevant peer rankings, where the combined funds' performance is ranked in the top quartile or better over every relevant timeframe. This track record in pure performance reflects the dedication of 30 years of SBI teams in leadership, as well as a faithful adherence to core principles of patient, long-term institutional investing. I want to thank our entire team for their impact on this portfolio and the prior generations of SBI team members. I would also note that the financial press has highlighted the general lack of private market distributions that many in our industry have experienced over the last several years. I want to share with you that our portfolio continues to perform well, including in terms of these distributions from private markets managers. Specifically, I would call out, in calendar year 2024, we received over $3.8 billion of distributions. And in calendar year 2025, to date through September 30th, that trend has continued with over $3 billion in distributions received. Also included is an administrative report in your materials at Tab B. In the interest of time, I have no additional comments to add to that report. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have before we proceed to the next section.
Thank you, Executive Director, and thank your team again for... As we measure against our peers, I think it's obvious with this slide, the performance is outstanding and I'm grateful for that. Any questions before we move on from other members of the executive? Hearing nothing further from the SBI, I would recognize Executive Director Schertz to walk us through the Administrative Committee reports. And without objection, I propose that we take a single vote on all these items at the end. Hearing none, that's what we'll do. Executive Director, you are recognized.
Thank you, sir. Again, in the interest of time, I would call to your attention that the recommendations from the Administrative Committee are reflected in Tab C of your materials. Specifically, they include a number of items. I'll highlight them now. The Executive Director's Proposed Annual Objectives for Fiscal Year '26, the Budget Plan for the Entity for Fiscal '26 and '27, the Continuing Fiduciary Education Plan that's required by statute, and the Executive Director's Evaluation and Salary Process, which is unchanged from prior years. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Hearing none, anything further, Executive Director?
No, sir.
Hearing none, I would call for a motion to do the following. Adopt the recommended approval of Executive Director's Fiscal Year '26 Annual Objectives, adopt the recommended approval of the Fiscal Year '26-27 Budget Plan, adopt the recommended approval of the Continuing Fiduciary Education Plan, and to adopt the recommended evaluation and salary process for the Executive Director.
So moved.
I now call a roll call vote. Auditor Blaha?
Aye.
Attorney General Ellison?
Aye.
Secretary Simon?
Aye.
And I, Governor Walz, vote in favor of the motion. The motion carries and the recommendations are approved. I'd now like to recognize Executive Director Schertz and Investment Advisory Council Chair Gary Martin to walk through the Private Market Investment Reports. You are both recognized.
Thank you, sir. I'll turn it over to Chair Martin for his review of the recommendations from the IAC meeting.
Great, thank you and good morning, Governor and members. For the record, my name is Gary Martin and I'm privileged to serve as the Chair of the Investment Advisory Council for the Minnesota State Board of Investments. Since the last SBI meeting, the Investment Advisory Council has met with the Executive Director and her staff on May 13th as well as October 20th to review the SBI's investment results for the first and second calendar quarters of the calendar year 2025, as well as staff's due diligence and recommendations for commitments to 11 private market investment funds. The 11 fund commitment recommendations total $2.2 billion and are listed on Page 1 under Tab D in your meeting materials. Now, each of the 11 commitment recommendations are with existing managers with whom the SBI has historically had very successful relationships. Nine of the commitment recommendations are in the private equity subsector, one is focused on real estate investments, and one is in the real asset category. The Council's discussions with staff focused on each general partner's organization and staff, their investment strategy, the market opportunity, the historical performance, and fund terms. Based on our review of the materials and our discussion with staff, the IAC unanimously endorsed staff's recommendations for commitments to each of these 11 private market investment opportunities, as we believe each of these commitments would provide attractive risk-adjusted returns for the SBI's investment portfolio. Governor, at this point in my remarks, I'm planning to provide a brief description of each of the 11 investment recommendations. However, I want to be mindful of your time. I do understand that you've been fully briefed on these investment opportunities prior to today's meeting, so I would defer to you as to whether you'd like me to briefly describe these investments, or I can move to address any comments or questions the members made.
Thank you, Chair Martin. I would all... Thank you for that. And I would also note that all of these documents are available publicly ahead of the meeting. Members of the board, get them in advance as do the public. Any questions from the board? Please proceed, Chair Martin.
That was the extent of my remarks. I think unless the Executive Director Schertz has anything to add, it would be up for the board's consideration.
I have no further comments, sir.
And I would like to the board, I'd like to... For the sake of continuity and discussion, we have two public comments dealing with these investments. And if there's no objection, I'd like to have those speakers present now, if that works.
Governor, if I may?
Yes, please go right ahead.
I don't know if you can hear me or see me. I just wanted to say, before we start the public comment section of this or any other portion of the meeting, I just wanted the public to know that I'll be sort of in and out. I'm here at a medical facility with my son. Everything's fine, just a minor thing, but I don't want people to misinterpret me, either the testifiers or the public misinterpret me being in and out as disrespectful or anything else. I just want to explain that for the benefit of the public, but I will be paying attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary. And parenting goes on in the midst of everything else, so thank you for that. At this time, I'd ask the Administrator to bring Jordan Ash in. And once... Once Jordan Ash is in, will be given two minutes to testify. Jordan Ash, you are recognized if you're online and you're in for two minutes.
Okay, great. And Governor Walz, I'll try to follow your lead and talk fast. Good morning and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jordan Ash and I am with the Private Equity Stakeholder Project. The SBI's decision to commit $250 million to the Energy Capital Partners VI Fund is a bad investment and not consistent with its climate engagement strategy. Energy Capital Partners recently bought the 50-year-old Gavin Coal Plant in Ohio, which is estimated to cause $1.7 billion in human health impacts annually, including over 200 premature deaths per year. ECP has not stated any plans to retire this plant. And this is not the only area of concern regarding climate pollution from ECP, which has been ranked as one of the top polluters according to a University of Amherst Research Institute. Our research estimated that ECP is responsible for over 8 million metric tons of CO2 as of 2024, a number that is now higher due to its purchase of one of the most polluting coal plants in the nation. And while the SBI is not investing directly in the Gavin Plant, are there any guarantees from ECP that it will not use the SBI's new investment to purchase additional fossil fuel assets? Has ECP agreed not to use ECP VI to buy more coal plants? The SBI has been one of the only pension fund investors in Energy Capital Partners since 2013 and has been by far its largest. Only two other U.S. pension funds have invested in ECP during this time, the Teacher Retirement Systems of Texas and Louisiana. And the new commitment of $250 million is the SBI's largest to ECP yet and is more than the commitments to ECP VI of the Texas and Louisiana funds combined. There are also questions about the performance of ECP funds. Is the SBI concerned that the predecessor fund, ECP V, which Minnesota is invested in, has had a rate of return that puts it in the fourth quartile relative to its peers according to Pitch Book? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. At this time, we also have another speaker on the private equities, Emily Moore. Ms. Moore, once you are in, you are recognized for two minutes. Administrator, do we have Ms. Moore in?
Yes, Governor. I think she just came off mute.
Great. Ms. Moore, you... Emily Moore, you are recognized for two minutes.
Thank you very much. And thank you for allowing the Minnesota Divestment Coalition to comment. We're taking this opportunity to reiterate our strong belief in an investment protocol that should inform all of your investments. And Jordan can talk fast. I don't talk so fast, so I hope you'll allow me a few extra seconds. Our comment is about a potential commitment to invest the $250 million in Energy Capital Partners. We know that it's not the same fund that you would be investing in, but it still is supporting a company that seems to ignore the climate crisis we're in. One of the reasons that ECP has used for the investment is that the governor of Ohio asked, requested that it not be decommissioned, that the Gavin Coal Fired Power Plant not be decommissioned, because Ohio needs the energy well. Our response is this: The Minnesota Legislature set its first renewable energy standard in 2001. That is almost 25 years ago. And they've worked steadily since then. The 2024 Legislature passed 100% clean energy, requiring Minnesota Electric Utilities to use only carbon-free energy by 2040. So we invite the state of Ohio to get on board with that kind of response to the climate crisis. Responding to the crime... To the crisis at this time is absolutely critical. We're out of time. It takes all of us to respond, every facet of our community, the government, the teachers, the investors, the citizens. And up until now, the investment community has somehow thought that their investments are unrelated to this responsibility. Nothing is... Could be farther from the truth.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. At this time, I would ask Executive Director Schertz or Chair Martin to respond, and then any questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd be happy to provide a brief response. First and foremost, I want to be very clear that we appreciate at the SBI thoughtful feedback and hearing diverse perspectives. And in particular, I want to thank both of the speakers for sharing their views today. This is a fundamentally important part of democracy. We hear you, we listen, we meet with you. And Ms. Moore, I think your group should be well aware of what a tremendous advocate you are for your cause and how seriously we take your efforts. I will say, the IAC has endorsed and we would renew our recommendation to invest in both ECP and its parent company, Bridgepoint. Both are well-respected, high-quality investment managers. Regarding ECP in particular, I would add, as it's been referenced here today and is well-known, the SBI is not investing in the pool of capital being used to acquire the Gavin Plant. That's the subject of this discussion. Furthermore, ECP has a well-deserved reputation as being a leader in the sustainability field, including, and I think it's noteworthy, its status as one of the few firms who has actually successfully decommissioned several coal plants. While we are not investors in that fund, we appreciate ECP's thoughtful approach regarding the significant number of union jobs at this particular site and the current meaningful power generation needs inherent in the PJM Basin, which covers a large portion of the eastern United States. Power demands in the PJM Basin have significantly increased over the last 12 months, raising meaningful concerns about both reliability and power prices for consumers or ratepayers. Importantly, we would note, any decision by ECP to retire or otherwise shut down that plant would need to be made in conjunction with the grid operator and the federal regulators who have a responsibility to ensure reliability. Once again, we recommend, with the IAC's endorsement, that the board approve the investment in ECP before you today.
Thank you, Executive Director. And I would thank you, Mr. Ash and Ms. Moore. This is a conversation that I had with the Executive Director here a week or so ago on this very investment. And I think it is well-known that the members of this State Board of Investment have been deliberate, been aggressive, and been responsible in our approach to climate change, recognizing that it's an existential threat and that long-term fiduciary responsibility requires us to do that, whether it would be the divestment from thermal coal or working on a long-range plan. So we hear you on this. Your concerns are certainly warranted, but I want you, and I would respectfully say that this Executive Director has addressed this, has assured me that this is the investment that keeps us moving in the right direction. Other members of the board, any comments or questions before I call a motion? Hearing none, I'd call a motion to approve the recommendations for the private market commitments?
So moved.
I now call a roll call vote of each member to state their vote. Auditor Blaha?
Aye.
Attorney General Ellison?
Aye.
Secretary Simon?
Aye.
And I, Governor Walz, vote in favor of the motion. The motion carries, the recommendations are approved. Thank you, Executive Director and Chair Martin. I now recognize Executive Director Schertz to walk us through the Asset Allocation Study and Investment Policy Statement. And without objection, I propose that we take a single vote on the next two agenda items.
Great, thank you, sir.
Go ahead. You're recognized, Executive Director.
Thank you, sir. We're going to walk through, and I'm going to turn it over to my colleague in one second, one of the more important decisions this board makes in its role as a governing body and the arbiter of policy, both administrative and investment. I am very pleased to introduce our Deputy Chief Investment Officer, Errol Snderiger, who will walk you through this, and also we'll hear from our consultants as well. Errol?
Good morning. Thank you, Ms. Schertz. Good morning to the board. I'm pleased today to present an executive summary of the SBI's 2025 Asset Allocation Study for the Combined Funds. Both this executive summary and the full presentation are included in your printed materials under Tab E. This presentation and the recommendations herein are the result of an 18-month effort involving SBI investment staff working in close collaboration with Aon, one of the board's generalist consultants. The study was also supported by the work of Makita, Alborn, and numerous other industry partners. I'd like to thank them for their contributions. Turning to the next slide, the key objectives for this study are laid out on Page 2, and this was an effort conducted both by SBI staff as well as Aon. The overarching goal of the study was to identify an appropriate strategic asset allocation for the combined funds to achieve its long-term objectives. Additionally, staff identified other considerations, which included maintaining or improving a number of key portfolio metrics with respect to portfolio efficiency, which is a measure of return per unit of risk taken, and to ensure maintaining a strong liquidity profile. Next slide. Page 3 summarizes the key phases of the study. Staff put significant effort into developing a repeatable process for each project phase and focused on building hands-on experience with the strategic asset allocation process at all levels of SBI investment staff. I would also note that Aon played a significant role in each step of the process. Next slide. A key finding of this study is that the combined fund's current strategic asset allocation policy continues to be appropriate to achieve the combined fund's investment objectives. Accordingly, as you will see in our recommendations, the recommendations from the study reflect incremental changes focused more on improving portfolio execution than on proposing large changes to asset class weightings. Specifically, the portfolio's current allocation benefits from an appropriate focus on return-oriented asset classes and strong diversification within those asset classes across both public and private equity and public and private fixed income. Also, the portfolio benefits from ample liquidity and an allocation to high-quality protection assets that can protect the portfolio in an economic downturn. And finally, the portfolio's current asset allocation has produced strong historical performance results. The next page presents the recommendations. Page 5 presents the proposed asset allocation and rebalancing ranges alongside the current strategic asset allocation weightings. Before discussing the recommended changes to the policy allocation, I would emphasize that the proposed asset allocation leaves intact the current broad asset allocation weightings of a 50% allocation to public equities, a 25% allocation to fixed income and cash, and a 25% allocation to private markets, and of course, comports with not only statutory limits but all existing board policies. Drawing your attention to the right side of Page 5, the four primary adjustments in the proposed strategic asset allocation are as follows. Number 1, reducing the duration of the Treasury Protection Portfolio allocation to reduce interest rate sensitivity and improve stress period liquidity within the Treasury allocation. Number 2, reducing the portfolio's cash allocation to 3% from 5% and shifting that allocation to a combination of Core and Core Plus bonds and return-seeking fixed income. Third, adopting target ranges for sub-asset classes within private markets to formalize the diversification objective within that asset class. And finally, updating the asset mix for the uninvested private markets allocation to better reflect the underlying risk exposures of the total private markets portfolio. The rebalancing ranges presented on the right side of the table... The rebalancing ranges presented on the right side of the table at the high-level asset classes, including public equity and fixed income and cash, hew to the portfolio's long-held plus-or-minus 10% rebalancing ranges. The recommendation also includes proposed rebalancing ranges for sub-asset classes. These are intentionally wider to allow for flexibility at the sub-asset class level while maintaining the plus-or-minus 10% band for the broad asset class categories. Overall, the proposed changes move the portfolio in a positive direction and reflect important enhancements to portfolio implementation. As you can see at the bottom left, the net effect of the recommended changes are expected to have a modest impact on the portfolio's expected risk and return profile. I would note that the expected return and risk figures presented here are model estimates based on assumptions of forward-looking asset class performance. These figures are subject to uncertainty and should be used as a basis of comparison rather than considered predictive. Importantly, the range of potential outcomes for performance in any given year is wide, and the actual lived future performance of the combined fund's portfolio will almost certainly be different than the exact figures presented here. With that, I'd like to give both Aon and Makita the opportunity to make any comments before opening it up to questions from the board.
Thank you, Director Sondreger. Can you all hear me? Great. My name is Katie Comstock. I'm a partner with Aon Investments. As was noted, Aon serves as a general investment consultant to the Minnesota State Board of Investment. I will start by echoing what the Executive Director mentioned, that the asset allocation decision is among the most important and most influential decisions as it relates to the success of the combined fund's performance. Alongside asset allocation is the governance. We believe that the recommendations stemming from this asset allocation study improve the outcomes of both of these topics. Throughout this process, we've largely categorized the results of the asset allocation review into three categories. The first is largely a re-underwriting of the existing asset allocation strategy. I want to emphasize the significant time and detailed analysis that went into ensuring that the high-level policy continues to be appropriate. The second relates to the recommended changes. We view these more as refinements, beneficial though minor enhancements to the policy that will improve the implementation of the asset allocation. And the third, we categorize both as asset allocation and governance enhancements, and these include formalizing and improving the rebalancing policy and the benchmarks for evaluating the asset allocation. Overall, we believe that the results of this asset allocation study have put the combined funds in a position to achieve the investment objectives that have been set out at the beginning of this study and importantly aligned with the long-term investment objectives of the State Board of Investment. I'd be happy to take any questions or pass over to Ellen at Makita.
Mr. Governor, members, Ellen Emkin, Makita, we fully support the actions that are recommended. At the margin, the changes are very small and incremental, but they make the portfolio more transparent and more reflective of the needs going forward. We unequivocally support the recommendation.
Well, thank you all. I think at this time, we'll have the board with some questions, and I guess, Executive Director, I would ask you to maybe help before I'll turn to the auditor. Tell me how this aligns us with, with other peer funds and, and the best practices involved what we just heard from our, from our team, if you could.
Thank you, sir. I'd be happy to, and I think perhaps, once I answer this question, it would also be helpful if we tackled the IPS question and take those questions in combination. It may provide additional information. But I would say, as you're going to hear when we get to the next section in particular, one, our portfolio, generally speaking, is representative of what you would expect to see in an institutional quality portfolio of our size and tenure in terms of its composition. There are differences from fund to fund, of course. We tend philosophically, for example, to have a higher allocation to publicly traded equities. We have a lower allocation to what we call alternative assets. And there are a number of other nuances along the way. But what I would say is, as you compare us side by side, there would be no doubt, people would say, yes, this is in fact an institutional quality portfolio you would expect to see of peers of our kind.
Thank you. Auditor Blaha, you are recognized.
Thank you. Thank you. I know that, you know, I, I think Executive Director Schertz's idea of waiting for everything after we talk about the IPS makes more sense, so I can hold off.
Any further discussions? I would then call for a motion to approve the asset allocation study and the investment policy statement. Oh, my bad, Executive Director, we've got one more. Appreciate it.
No, thank you, sir. I just woke up today very excited to talk about the IPS, so. So, sir, these, these concepts into the board, they, they do get hand in glove for an institutional quality organization like ourselves, and I want to thank Mr. Sondreger and the entire team that spent so much time on asset allocation as well as our independent consulting partners. The next step, once you arrive at the asset allocation and the recommendations, which I would reiterate, the IAC has affirmed and endorsed, the next step is to create an investment policy statement that embodies those recommendations. It is the single-source document where from this point forward, you would turn to and be able to find everything that Mr. Sondreger just discussed. In addition, it is the principal document that sets forth the roles and responsibilities of the very key parties involved here. Most importantly, the board in its role of governance and policy and oversight, and the State Board of Investment staff, and our role as executing on a day-to-day basis in implementation. Given that we've just heard a presentation on those asset allocation recommendations, I won't, I won't go over those again. You will, you have them in your materials in the IPS. I would like to, however, bring on Ms. Comstock and her colleagues from Aon and drill down on one important feature that is reflected in this, and that is delegated authority. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Comstock.
Thank you, Executive Director. I want to first start by highlighting and reemphasizing the importance of this document and the contents of the investment policy statement. I also want to introduce my colleague, Julie Becker. She is an attorney, and she leads Aon's fiduciary services team. This is a team within Aon that is independent and reviews all things governance-related, including the important topic of delegation. This is a discussion we've been having across the institutional landscape. As the market environment evolves, the governance structure needs to evolve with it. We want to spend just a few minutes talking about the landscape of delegation, why boards delegate, the benefits, the considerations, and the most important part, what are the best practices to ensure a successful and a prudent delegation model? I'm going to turn it over to Julie to cover a few of those items.
Thank you and good morning. If we go to slide two, we believe delegation is a governance best practice when done prudently, and studies have shown that good governance practices lead to increased investment performance. Trustees as fiduciaries are encouraged to delegate to qualified experts. The Prudent Investor Act and ERISA expressly permit and advocate delegation when done prudently, and to the extent a prudent investor would do so under similar circumstances. The goal of delegation is to establish an effective and efficient process that gives the board more time to focus on high-level policy matters, such as your asset allocation, while enabling your staff as experts to make timely investment decisions. Prudent delegation requires clearly defined roles, processes, and parameters, proper selection of your qualified experts, and proper monitoring and reporting. If we go to slide three, delegation is a fiduciary decision. If a governing body doesn't have the expertise, failure to obtain expert advice and/or delegation may be considered a fiduciary breach. So the duty of prudence expects boards to delegate certain responsibilities for efficiency and effectiveness. Delegation supports the board being able to focus on strategic policy rather than implementation or operational decisions, leverage of expertise and resources that are not always present at the board level, and more agile and informed selection of investment managers. So slide four talks about the benefits and considerations of delegation. So the benefits include allowing investment decisions to be made more efficiently and more timely, opportunity to improve economics via potentially better opportunities, management fees and access due to faster decision-making, and greater flexibility for those who have the greatest expertise to complete their duties. And most importantly, allows the delegating body, the board, more time to focus on items of higher importance. There are also some considerations when deciding to delegate, such as reduced manager selection and participation for the delegated body, and the need for continual monitoring and reporting. But proper risk management addresses such concerns as listed on the right-hand column and as I will explain on the next slide. So on slide five, these are the necessary elements for responsible delegation. So to be prudent, the process documentation must be clear, the roles and responsibilities well-defined and reflected by board policy. The board should have comfort and confidence in the internal and external resources, and it's important to ensure that those resources remain sufficient. There should be appropriate and clear parameters of delegation, and most importantly, it's important to have the feedback loop. Define reporting back to the board so that it can fulfill its oversight duties. And as the ultimate fiduciaries, the board should review that the delegation remains appropriate, and if not, make changes. I'll turn it over to Katie.
Thank you, Julie. On the next slide, the last thing we wanted to cover was just the peer landscape as it relates to delegation. Aon has done several studies across the institutional landscape, and two relevant takeaways from these studies include, one, that delegation is a common governance structure, more so for those plans with larger assets under management with large and sophisticated investment teams. The second key takeaway is that there is no one-size-fits-all approach. No two models for delegation are alike, and they should not be. They need to be appropriate for the specific organization to allow them to enhance the governance structure. And so before I hand it back to the Executive Director to talk about the specifics for the SBI that are being proposed today, I wanted to reiterate just a few key points that Julie mentioned. First is that delegation is a fundamental component of sound governance, and it has the ability to improve the governance structure if it is implemented appropriately. This means, one, clearly defined roles and responsibilities, processes and procedures; two, ensuring qualified resources, both internal and external; and three, that the proper monitoring and reporting is in place to ensure that the board is receiving the right information to fulfill the fiduciary responsibilities. And with that, Executive Director, we're happy to take questions to the board or turn it back over to you.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I'll present the next few slides, and then we can open it up if that works for the board.
Absolutely. Please proceed.
Thank you, sir. We wanted to come behind Aon's presentation and walk through some of the important aspects that they've highlighted and make sure that you have visibility over what is in place to make sure that we meet the very important criteria they've set forth. We want to start with, from the team's perspective, why, why do we support this? Why now? And answer the question, why did the IAC support it yesterday in their endorsement? First of all, as you've heard from Aon, we believe that this is aligned with fiduciary duty and in keeping with good governance. This is not a reduction in governance, governance, it's widely viewed, and I think appropriately so, as an enhancement to governance by focusing on those key items that reside within the board. As we'll see in the next slide, we also firmly believe, and Aon has indicated, that this is indicative of best practice across our peers of all sizes and geographies, and we'll touch on that in one second. From our standpoint as investment practitioners in the day-to-day operations of the portfolio, this would be an important enhancement for efficient decision-making, and in particular, facilitating our ability to take advantage of attractive opportunities as well as favorable economics. I touched on this briefly, the why now question. There are a number of aspects. First and foremost, the fact that we have reached the culmination of this 18-month project on an asset allocation study makes this exactly the right time to turn those results into an IPS, which would also embody these relative roles and responsibilities. As well, you now have a team, and I think we've indicated before, we're very blessed to have had successive excellent teams here. But now you have a leadership team that has been in this particular leadership structure with an internal investment committee and the four principals working together for three years. I would also note, in our industry, as all practitioners have observed, the velocity of decision-making has accelerated meaningfully across all of our assets, all of our allocations, in particular, when it comes to co-investment opportunities and continuation vehicles. And once again, we think it's the right time to capture these attractive economic opportunities in a way that no longer aligns with a quarterly meeting cadence. Next slide, please. In designing this and thinking through it, again, we worked very closely with both Aon and Makita, our independent consultants, and the goal was to make sure that in all instances, we had appropriate checks and balances, and that we were observing the important role of the board in policy, strategy, governance, and heaven forbid your right to fire the Executive Director and Chief Investment Officer, but also staff's role in implementation, manager due diligence selection, and those tactical day-to-day decisions of the portfolio. Next slide. As I mentioned, as we looked across the peer universe, I think Aon's comments, and you'll probably hear it from Makita as well, we see delegation far and wide, not only in our peers of our size and quality and tenure, we see it across the board of all size categories and all geographies. And as we heard yesterday at the IAC, it's not just pension plans that have moved to this model far and wide, but as well, it's universities, it is foundations and endowments and family offices. This is seen as an important feature of a well-performing plan. Next slide. I'm going to walk you through a few slides touching on these safeguards. Next slide. In particular, I want to emphasize, we acknowledge that no matter what process, no matter what IPS we have in place, we are only as good as the people that you have in these seats and your level of trust in them. While I don't enjoy pointing out the number of years I've been working, and it continues to grow, reaching a shockingly high number, I am really proud of the team that we have here. In particular, we've highlighted here the experience level of the four senior investment officers entrusted with your assets. It actually runs much deeper than the four of us, and we'll touch on that in a minute. Next slide. We've had the opportunity to share with you our track record that we think bolsters trust and confidence in this approach. Next slide. As well, critically important, we want to highlight the checks and balances structurally that remain in place and are being created with this IPS. First and foremost, again, I want to touch on that governance enhancement. The board retains all of the most powerful levers, including all policy decisions, investment and administrative. Today is an example of two fundamental important powers, the asset allocation policy and the investment policy statement. You alone have the power to adopt and modify these important policies. You can revoke and modify delegation at any point in time for any reason. You alone control that. And again, I hate to say it again, you have the power to hire and fire the Executive Director and Chief Investment Officer. As well importantly, you have access to independent professional experts. You are not beholden to our views alone. Two of them are on this call that you've worked with for some time, both Aon and Makita. We have worked it into the IPS that you have the right to hire directly an independent board consultant. And the IAC leadership represented by Chair Martin, who is here today, and the Vice Chair have direct access to the board should they sense an issue you need to be aware of. And the SBI team is subject to an extensive annual audit by the independent auditor, OLA, annually. And in the IPS, we have taken time with Aon's help and support and Makita's to make sure that we are clearly delineating these roles and responsibilities. Specifically, I want to highlight that the IPS provides parameters for all investment decisions, including clear limits on the size of our commitments, the annual aggregate commitments governed by a private markets pacing model that you review, and as well, in addition to all the features that you have seen in the IPS, as always, Minnesota statutes provide very explicit and extensive limits on our investment actions. Those remain in effect no matter what the IPS says. Next slide. We also have a robust investment process that we're quite proud of, and we think justifies a high level of trust. a high level of trust. In addition to the experienced team that I've mentioned, we have a robust decision-making process. This does not rely on a single decision-maker alone. We have put in place over the last three years a comprehensive structure, including an internal investment committee, a senior leadership team, and a deep resource in our asset class heads. We have a time-tested manager due diligence process for both public and private markets, a successful track record of manager selection, strong ongoing monitoring of our managers, and we have access to extensive investment resources, including some of the partners you see today, as well as deep access to data and analytics, and we have a rigorous risk control and monitoring system in place. Next slide. In terms of transparency and reporting, we think this is fundamentally important. I'd want to highlight something you're already well aware. There will be the continuing transparency that you see on an ongoing basis in board and IAC meetings. Your independent investment consultants meet one-on-one with board members and designees without our presence so that you can get that direct view. The Executive Director and CIO meet one-on-one with board members at least quarterly. We produce a quarterly performance deck and performance review that not only you have access to, but we publicly publish, as well as, of course, our comprehensive annual report. In addition to these existing reporting mechanisms, we will be reporting in a distinct standalone page all manager hire and terminations and commitment decisions in our quarterly reports. And we will be coming to the IAC and the board with an annual portfolio strategic work plan. Again, where we pull back the lens and focus on those key strategic questions. For example, at the beginning of the year, here's our best efforts view of what we intend to tackle in the portfolio. For example, as I mentioned, we think that we may bring on several new emerging market managers, for example. We would give you that kind of highlight of what you could expect to see during the year. And again, policy controls that are actually incorporated in this living document, the IPS that you control. Delegated authority reviewed by the board at least every three years. The IPS reviewed by the board at least every three years. Private markets commitment pacing model reviewed by the board at least every two years. And as we've mentioned, the asset allocation study updated and approved by the board at least every five years. You alone have the controls to also say you'd like it at a more frequent cadence. I believe that is the last slide, but just in case it's not, I'll say next slide. Thank you. With that, I turn to Aon and Makita to share the reflections, and once again, highlight that the IAC unanimously voted yesterday to endorse the IPS, the asset allocation, and this approach. Anne?
Thank you, Executive Director. I just wanted to reiterate that based on our observations and our understanding of the functioning of the State Board of Investment, we believe that these delegated proposal, the delegated model that is proposed, will improve the governance structure through more efficient implementation and by allowing the board to focus on those higher-level policy decisions. Delegation is not a decision that we take lightly, and we're comfortable and fully supportive of this proposal because of the resources, both internal and external, that are in place, the processes that are in place, and that the board has the benefit of seeing the track record of those policies and resources. And secondly, and equally as important, the adoption of the investment policy statement, which includes those clearly defined roles and responsibilities, clearly defined delegated parameters, and the enhanced reporting requirements that the Executive Director just walked through, that include a formal review of that delegated authority. And so with those things in place, we believe that the SBI will be functioning in a manner that is aligned with best practices. Thank you.
Once again, Alan Emkin from Makita, Mr. Governor, members. The IPS is a logical evolution of the policies and procedures that govern the decision-making of $150 billion. It's a good thing to do. It makes logical sense. It's reasonable. It's clear. It is truly a best-practice document. And the issue of delegation among our clients, where internal and external resources are capable, we always recommend delegation to the staff with oversight by the fiduciaries. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Executive Director, thank you to your team. A very detailed discussion of this policy, really grateful for you taking it through. And I would just, we'll have some questions from the board, but I would just say this modernizing and already effective board, recognizing that as, you know, as the landscape changes, we should change. And I would make note, maybe to the public as they're hearing this, this is to make sure that we are listening to the experts, that fiduciary responsibility, listen to the experts. I listen to the experts when they design a bridge. I listen to the experts on public health, and I listen to the experts on finance investment. And I think for folks that are thinking, how is this going to impact? You heard the Executive Director said the responsibility, fiduciary responsibility still lies with the board, but a lot of these detailed discussions. And I think this is, another benefit of this is, is just to be very candid, it protects these investments from overly political decision-making, based on the best practices of the experts that are looking at the fiduciary responsibility according to the plan. So I am supportive of this, grateful for the work. I would turn to Auditor Blaha for any questions, comments.
Thank you, Governor, and thank you to all of you who've worked on this. And the reason, I'm glad we're voting on this as a set, because that's the way I can say yes to it. But before this, you know, I did talk to some of my friends around the country, and I do want to remind people that one of the reasons you see some variation across the country in how they handle delegation is because these kind of boards are structured quite differently across the country. In fact, not every place has a state auditor, or comptroller, or treasurer, or legislative auditor, or all the potential combinations thereof. So it's not uncommon to see some differences. And I tried to talk to primarily the people that were similar to us and didn't hear any concerns about their delegation. I'm glad to see also that the State Board, that staff took the advice of our consultants and has added that in there, and I think we will continue to make sure with this nice, it's a nice tight setup. And of course, I thought about my experience on other boards where we delegate authority, which is really common with any board with a lot of money, frankly, and so have worked with delegation authorities several times. And I think, so there's, and I think there are three reasons it works for us. One, we have a good track record, frankly. And if you can take a look at how successful our asset allocation was in a time that was not just chaotic, but also unprecedented. It's one thing for things to be up and down, it's another thing to be, have things go in a direction they've never gone before, yet our strategy still held up. And I think that tells us that we've got a lot that's working there as far as our overall strategies. It's good to see that we have it all, put it all in one place so that people can look at this, not just us, but the public can compare our work to our strategies in a much easier way. You know, all of these things were there. It's not like we didn't have all of these kind of safeguards and guardrails, it's just that we put them all together so people could see them better. That is really, really key. And finally, one thing I like about delegation of authority is that it organizes staff actions in a way that a board member can look at trends. That's really where we're best suited. If we, you know, we can approve things in dribs and drabs and bits and pieces, but when you have a delegated authority, it causes reporting that puts it together for a board so we can look at trends and truly take a look to make sure that staff actions are matching our policies. So this is just generally a better way to work as a board. It's also, again, because we have the additional transparencies in organizations, also balances it out to put us in a better position. So again, I appreciate all the work on this, and I plan to vote yes.
Any further discussions? Hearing none, I would call for a motion to approve the asset allocation study and the investment policy statement.
So moved.
I would not call roll call, vote of each member. Auditor Blaha?
Aye.
Attorney General Ellison?
Aye.
Secretary Simon? I believe the secretary is with his child at an appointment. We do have a quorum present, so I, Governor Walz, vote in favor of the motion. The motion carries. Executive Director Shirts, would you take the next agenda item on securities trading policy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be very brief. This is a routine update of our internal securities trading policy. Where it is appropriate, we are tougher in the rules than the Minnesota Campaign Finance Reform. It sets out clear parameters for staff to follow and observe in terms of their trading activities. This material has been included in your briefing materials. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any discussion from the board before we move to a motion? Hearing none, I call for a motion to update the policy?
So moved.
Thank you. Auditor Blaha, how do you vote?
Let me get my audio working. Oh, aye.
Attorney General Ellison?
Aye.
Secretary Simon? Again, a quorum is present. I, Governor Walz, vote in favor of the motion. The motion carries. The updated policy is approved. Thank you, Executive Director Shirts, and to your team. At this time, next item on the agenda, I would like to discuss the SBI speaker policy. In 2021, the SBI adopted a formal speaker policy that provided guidance on requesting to address the board at these meetings. Additionally, the policy clearly stated that the board's commitment to hearing from the public. In order to hear from more public members on a variety of topics that are relevant to board business, we believe that it's time to make some slight adjustments. A summary of these adjustments was posted on the SBI's website prior to this meeting, but I'd like to walk through these changes. The revised policy will give all approved speakers two minutes to address the board, give the chair the discretion to approve up to 15 speakers per meeting, clarify the chair will prioritize hearing a variety of topics, hearing speakers who have not previously had the opportunity to address the SBI, and hearing from individuals who have assets managed by the SBI. The goal here is to strike the proper balance of allowing to make sure that the public is heard at these meetings and that efficiency and practice is adhered to. At this time, I would open up to other members of the board if there's any discussion on the policy. Auditor, you are recognized.
Oh, thank you. And I want to also thank all the people who have talked with us about ways we could improve this policy. Now, I don't, like most good agreements, it's not give everybody, everything everybody wants. However, I think this makes it a lot clearer if you're a speaker. If you're coming up to us, you know, you got two minutes, you don't have to worry about what someone else in a grouping does. And while that, those things were, our former policy was really interesting and creative, really hard for a speaker to navigate. So this is a much clearer policy, and I think we'll get at making sure we hear, we hear better from our public. But of course, you know, when you, when you have a meeting like this, you know, meetings are for decisions, and I really appreciate all the people who reach out to us so that we can talk to you before the meeting. And really, we have all worked really hard, and I know for a fact that all of us have been meeting extensively with a variety of stakeholders regarding SBI issues, and we want to continue that. So those of you, we understand you have two minutes here, but I really appreciate the fact that many of you have given us a lot of time outside of these meetings, and I hope you'll continue to ask for those opportunities so we can really have a deeper discussion. But again, I again appreciate all of the work on this, and I think it will be better, but we should always continue to be watching it.
Thank you, Auditor. Anything further? I would ask for a motion to approve the recommended changes to SBI speaker policy.
So moved.
I would not call roll call, vote. Auditor Blaha?
Aye.
Attorney General Ellison?
Aye.
Secretary Simon? Again, a quorum being present. I, Governor Walz, vote in favor of the motion. The ayes have it. The motion carries. The revised policy is adopted. Is there anything further from the board before we move to our speakers today? Hearing none, SBI received several requests for speaking at the meeting. Under the board speaker policy, requests to speak had to be submitted no later than five business days before the meeting. The deadline was Tuesday, October 14th at 5:00 p.m. Comments are limited to two minutes per speaker. I would ask the speakers to try and limit your remarks to this time. As the timer goes off, try and finish the thought that you're on with a few seconds afterwards, and we'll move to the next one, respecting their right to speak. Speakers will be moved into the Zoom meeting, so it'll take just a minute. I'll be notified that they're on, and we'll start moving in order. At this time, I would ask that Anna Madison be entered into the board meeting?
Has been admitted into the room.
Anna Madison, you are recognized for two minutes to address. Please proceed.
Thank you. I'm Anna Madison. I'm a Minnesotan, a taxpayer, and a parent of a six-month-old and three-year-old. My children are here today because of IVF, and like you, Governor Walz, I am one in six people worldwide that has experienced infertility. Today, I'm asking the board to divest all taxpayer dollars and public employee pension funds from Israel and all related entities profiting from the occupation apartheid and genocide of Palestinians. I'd like to call your attention to the experts on this and focus on the U.N. Commission of Inquiry Report published on September 16th that provides legal analysis demonstrating that Israel is committing genocide. This report finds that Israel intentionally attacked and destroys Gaza's main fertility clinic while also blocking medicine for pregnancies, deliveries, and neonatal care from entering Gaza. It notes that Israel targeted Al Basma IVF clinic, destroying 4,000 embryos and 1,000 sperm samples in unfertilized eggs. The report states that it is reasonable to conclude that Israeli security forces knew of the function of the clinic and intended to target and destroy the reproductive material within, and that the widespread and systematic targeting of children is part of a strategy to destroy the biological continuity and future existence of the Palestinian group in Gaza. I've spent the last two years undergoing infertility treatments as Israel's systematic genocide accelerated, enduring the daily injections, hormone patches, and pills required to become pregnant or maintain a pregnancy. The horror of losing your child to genocide after undergoing infertility treatments is something I cannot imagine. I think of the Palestinian mother rocking her dead child wrapped in a bloody shroud, crying out. I took 580 injections to have him. I think about them daily as I care for my own children. The U.N. has handed you a gift with this report. It provides you with the moral clarity and diplomatic cover to completely divest from Israel and all related entities complicit and/or profiting from genocide. To date, you've seemingly ignored the occupation apartheid and genocide Israel continues to commit despite the so-called ceasefire. If you let this moment slide and determine that it's okay for Minnesota to be complicit in genocide, then shame on you. I implore you to find your humanity and take action to divest from Israel immediately. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. At this time, our next speaker is Kathleen Rayner.
Kathleen has now been admitted into the room.
Kathleen Rayner, you are recognized for two minutes. Ms. Rayner, are you on mute? Administrator, are we?
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, I'm here because I'm a retired teacher, and now my income is derived from my pension. I'm concerned about how the SBI has been investing our pension funds in ways that are...
Can you hear me now?
Yes, please proceed.
In ways that are...
Can someone else mute their... If there's someone in the room that has it open, please mute.
Thanks. I'm a retired teacher. I'm concerned about the way investments are going because I think they're going against ethics that I had to work under in the last 30 years of teaching. The NEA's Code of Ethics updates the 1872 code that I remember when we had to haul coal and haul water to keep a good classroom and to keep it warm. We had to be good role models and not go off to the barber shop or to smoke. We had to provide a continuous education and not run out of town to get married, but those rules are updated. But they're still, under the NEA's Code of Ethics, the basic premises of worth and dignity of each human being, and the supreme importance of the pursuit of truth, and the protection of the freedom to learn and to teach, to keep these highest ethical standards. I've tried to live up to these expectations, but now, because of pension investments in war-profiteering companies, particularly in the Israeli state, I, along with many other public servants, including yourselves, find myself getting paid by a pension fund that's wrecking this ethics code. Instead of promising to seek truth, the SBI funds a contrary, Israel, that bans reporters and executes journalists in Gaza. and executes journalists in Gaza. Instead of caring for teaching, every university in Gaza has been flattened. And instead of protecting kids, SBI forces people on state pensions like me to get paid every month with funds derived from investments in a society, Israel, that murders children in the cruelest ways. Instead of taking care of the.
At this time, I would recognize our next speaker, David Koobes. Mr. Koobes, you are recognized. Administrator, do we have Mr. Koobes on?
Mr. Koobes, you're currently muted.
Mr. Koobes, if I could ask you to unmute, you'll be recognized for two minutes. Administrator, maybe we can move Mr. Koobes back down in the queue if we move Mr. Phillips
Mr. Phillips has now been admitted to the meeting.
Mr. Nathan Phillips, you're recognized for two minutes. Please proceed.
My name is Nathan Phillips, and I'm Jewish and a member of the Minnesota Anti-War Committee and the Palestine Solidarity Committee. My mother Janet Phillips has a Minnesota state pension fund, and I don't want it soaked in the blood of the Palestinians any more than Governor Perpich in 1985 wanted our state pensions fund soaked in the blood of black South Africans. If you honestly look at the asymmetrical power dynamic between the Israelis and Palestinians and the draconian laws that hold them in place, they're absolutely indistinguishable from the system that existed between whites and blacks and apartheid South Africa. With white South Africans who went to banquets and boutiques as black South Africans lived in constant fear of police repression and military massacres, Israelis go to bars and book clubs as starving Palestinians in Gaza try to pick up the pieces of their shattered lives, free stricken by the brutal murders of their family members and the complete destruction of the cities and towns they once knew. It's essential that this board not reward the companies that profited from and facilitated this genocide and that Israel be economically isolated such that they have no alternative but to end their illegal occupation of Gaza and the West Bank and the apartheid system which upholds Jewish supremacy over subjugated Palestinians. In the end, you either believe that Palestinian men, women, and children deserve to be slaughtered, occupied, and subject to military law, or you believe that the system of Israeli apartheid is so intolerable and antithetical to human dignity that it must be opposed and action taken by this board to divest, for there's no middle ground to stand on that isn't soaked in the blood of the Palestinians or rife with the stench of hypocrisy.
Governor, you're currently muted.
I'm sorry. At this time, we have Mattie Schwartz and Hannah Gary. Once they are admitted, they have two minutes?
They've both been admitted into the meeting.
Mattie Schwartz and Hannah Gary, you are recognized for two minutes. Please proceed, and we'll reset our clock.
Hi, my name is Hannah, and I am a public employee, a member of Abseney Local 668, and have been for just over seven years. I'm here this morning to join the call for the State Board of Investments to divest their pensions from apartheid and genocide. As a state employee who works in regional planning focusing on affordable housing, I take very seriously my commitment to housing justice, racial equity, and acknowledging the harm that our state has and continues to inflict on Black Indigenous and other communities of color. These are the harms state leaders have verbally acknowledged and have committed to addressing. The state of Minnesota has adopted the One Minnesota Plan to guide the vision for what the state can be. I want to highlight one of the guiding principles laid out in the plan. Do the right thing, especially when it is difficult. We are asking you today to follow the same commitments that we as public servants are holding up. The One Minnesota Plan states that we will seek to end disparities regardless of identity or zip code. Our commitment to doing the right thing does not stop at a city boundary, a county boundary, or a state boundary. We are committed to fighting for the dignity and rights to thrive of all people. The continued disregard and lack of transparency from this body is a direct contradiction to state goals and is blatant disrespect of the thousands of public employees serving the state. We do not want our pensions used to fund a genocide. The term genocide is not a matter of personal opinion. The atrocities in Gaza have been accurately named genocide by the International Association of Genocide Scholars, Physicians for Human Rights Israel, United Nations Commissions of Inquiry, Betzalem, Amnesty International, Human Rights Watch, and countless others. We are asking you to choose to take action, to choose to stand with families who are losing loved ones daily, watching their homes be destroyed, to choose to do the right thing, especially when it is difficult. I want to close by sharing a quote from a speech Bill Clinton gave while visiting Rwanda years after the genocide. We did not immediately call these crimes by their rightful name, genocide. We cannot change the past, but we can and must do everything in our power to help build a future without fear and full of hope. The crimes in Gaza are being named a genocide, and the state of Minnesota is actively funding that genocide. We are repeating the past, and this body has the choice and power to do the right thing, especially when it is difficult. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. At this time, I would ask that Mary Ford be entered into the queue and recognized for two minutes.
Mary Ford has been admitted to the meeting.
Mary Ford, you are recognized for two minutes. Ms. Ford, you may be on mute.
My name is Mary Ford. I was a teacher in the Minneapolis and Bloomington Public School districts. I have a TRA pension. Members of the board, the SBI should divest from Israel. After two years of the obliteration of Gaza, with nearly a quarter of a million killed or wounded and starvation still rampant, fewer and fewer people doubt that Israel has committed genocide. With the current violated ceasefire, there is a good chance that Gaza will go back to being what it used to be, an open-air prison, this time with no buildings. I was standing in my classroom at the end of October 2023, exactly two years ago. It was during lunch, and I received a text message from a Palestinian friend in Gaza. Her entire family, 15 people, were killed when an Israeli missile struck the St. Porphyis Church compound in Gaza City. I burst into tears because I knew her brother. At that moment, the fifth graders walked back into the classroom from recess, and they stared at me in shock, and they said, Ms. Ford, what happened? I gave them the briefest outline of what had just occurred. They said, Ms. Ford, Ms. Ford, contact our elected officials. Contact the people in charge. They will do something. The people in charge will do something. Divest. TRA pension money is used to invest in companies like General Dynamics, which makes the 2,000-pound bunker-busting, apartment-crushing bombs that have killed Palestinians. According to Francesca Albanese of the United Nations, Lockheed Martin is embedded in an economy of genocide. Lockheed Martin is the world's largest weapons manufacturer, and the SBI divests in it. I'm a member of the Anti-War Committee. I ask you to please divest. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. At this time, please have Kim DeFranco entered into the board. Kim DeFranco, you are recognized for two minutes.
Hello. Well done, being livestream. My name is Kim.
Please proceed.
Okay. My name is Kim DeFranco, representing Women Against Military Madness. I'm a taxpayer, and I know which, which correct side of history to be on. Today, you've all been serving together on the board since 2019. During those years, I figured the board conducted 28 meetings, heard from at least 600 people testifying to divest from Israel. You all heard from community members, social justice activists, religious leaders, nurses, teachers, union members, working people, and mostly importantly, from Palestinian families who live in Minnesota. They have continued to. We have continued to, we have continued to come here year after year, meeting after meeting, to demand the board to divest. After October 2023, you all heard too many heartbreaking and soul-crushing testimonials. You have seen the audience hold up too many pictures of murdered Palestinian children. You all have heard many statistics regarding Israel's declining economic status. My goodness, what else do you want us, what else do you need from us to get you to all to divest, unless you are all being intentionally deliberate and not divesting? Today is the 745th day of the genocide, during which Israel has exterminated whole generations of families and destroyed their homeland. It is perfectly clear Netanyahu and his cabinet will continue to push the Palestinian people off their land by force and by murder, even when ceasefires have been agreed upon. It's been very maddening to come year after year, meeting after meeting, to hear people speak while watching the board do nothing. We are here once again at a critical time, and you all don't have more time for more excuses. You're all top leaders of Minnesota. You have the power to do something. Divestments do work. What, divestments do work, no matter what the naysayers tell the board.
Thank you for your testimony. At this time, Mr. James DeLuca should be entered into the board.
James DeLuca has been admitted into the meeting.
James DeLuca, you are recognized for two minutes. Please proceed. At this time? Please proceed, Mr. DeLuca.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We sure can. Please go ahead. At this time?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Jim.
Please proceed, Mr. DeLuca.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Jim DeLuca. I'm a recent retiree from the state of Minnesota, from Mindott, and I'm a proud mate member where I've been a leader in Locals 1001 and 801. I was also a founding member of the Solidarity Caucus, which started as a ceasefire caucus. At the delegate assembly in 2024, we passed a resolution calling for a ceasefire and divestment of our pensions, pension funds from Israel and companies profiting from the genocide and apartheid in occupied Palestine. When I first testified to the SBI early in 2024, 10,000 Gazans had been murdered by the IDF. I was appalled then. Now I'm stunned. Here we are, after two years of children, women, kids, men, elderly, doctors, ER reps, et cetera, being sniped, bombed, burned, starved. The estimates are as high as 250,000, 500,000, who knows? There's so many, they're buried under the rubble. That's anywhere from an eighth to a quarter of the population of Gaza slaughtered by the IDF. We have a slight breath of relief with this ceasefire, which we know is fleeting and which has, surprise, been broken numerous times in the past two weeks and will continue to be broken, and by the apartheid state that will continue to escalate and continue to operate. And now, here I am, drawing on a pension and living off of what is partial blood money. Every month, it flows into my account, and I'm, I'm appalled and startled when I think about what it's been used for. Now, you're all good people, and I know that we're compromised by a system that rewards a rogue country that constantly bombs its neighbors and oppresses its indigenous citizens, a system that rewards war profiteers and their shareholders, but it has to stop. Worse than Russia and Ukraine, worse than apartheid South Africa, is apartheid Israel and the genocide that is inflicted on the Palestinian people. I and thousands of other public service employees and retirees demand the SBI divestment of apartheid Israel. Let's end the complicity now. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. At this time, please admit Daniel Kalani Matous to the meeting.
Daniel's been admitted to the meeting.
Daniel Kalani Matous, you are recognized for two minutes.
Can you hear me to the board?
We sure can. Please proceed.
Well, biological and chemical warfare leave a long and deadly wake in terms of adverse impacts to public health and ecological sustainability. The systematic destruction of water and food supplies and the poisoning of entire landscapes have consequences that reach far and wide, affecting many future generations. Furthermore, the normalization of these practices paves the way for the poisoning of domestic populations in Michigan, in Appalachia, Cancer Alley, and even Minnesota. In Gaza, the scale and concentration of such attacks is unprecedented. Radioactivity from depleted uranium munitions lingers in the land and the water for centuries. Particulate from exploded bombs and obliterated structures spreads throughout the region on the wind. The Gaza Strip is covered in a layer of rubble containing asbestos, unexploded bombs, and the unburied bodies of countless Palestinians not accounted for in the official death pool. Gaza's sanitation system has been systematically dismantled. Residents are forced to burn solid waste or pile it in open-air landfills. Stewards are dumped on the ground or in the sea. Such concentrations of toxic waste create a breeding ground for diseases and rats to transmit those diseases. Land that once sustained the population has been transformed into toxic cesspools rendered uninhabitable. It is foolish to think that the harm caused by these practices will be solely borne by Palestinians. The board has invested over $5 billion in entities that are complicit or even directly profiting from these practices. The board must divest from these entities, not just for the sake of the Palestinians, but for the future that we all share. The future of Palestine is the future of the world, and that is why Palestinian supporters or Palestine supporters are engaging in civil disobedience, including a sit-in to demand immediate divestment from Israel bonds, creation of a task force to publicly assess the risks of investments in companies complicit in Israel's crimes, and a commitment to hold all of these future meetings in person and not hide from the public. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. You are recognized. Brianna Krams, please proceed for two minutes.
Thank you. I am a mother, an attorney, and a proud mate member. I began my legal career interning at the United Nations Tribunal in Panam Pen. There, I supported witnesses testifying to the Khmer Rouge's war crimes in the 1970s. Justice was decades delayed, but it was not denied. Then I served as a public defender in Kuchichang and Itasca Counties, and now I work at MDH. I thought about bringing you data. I thought about showing you photos of children starved or maimed by bombs or rifle shots, but I believe you already know what is happening. And I believe that you know these are war crimes and that they are being committed and they are mounting. And I also believe that you know the difference between what is right and what is wrong. As fiduciaries managing our retirement funds, as oath takers, you have a legal and moral obligation to act on this knowledge, especially after signing UN Principles for Responsible Investments in 2019. Continued investment in companies implicated in war crimes exposes these funds and you to serious risk, regardless if you choose to ignore it or deny it. The ongoing culture of genocide denial that's being perpetuated by Governor Walz is unbearable and unlawful. The suspension of Equity Justice Black Caucus for at worst sympathizing with Palestinians is a serious injustice, and it demands accountability, and which we are going to continue to fight for. You cannot say you stand for peace while investing in war. in weapons, in surveillance tech that's used to slaughter Palestinian civilians. Google, Microscop, Amazon are all complicit in this. Please join the thousands of state workers that are demanding peace and justice and saying, no blood money. Divestment is the right thing and the fiscally responsible thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. At this time, Mr. William Truman should be entered in.
William has been admitted to the room.
William Truman, you are recognized. Please proceed for two minutes.
Hello, my name is William Truman, and I am a database developer and a member of MAPE Local three oh one. Last year, our union passed a resolution calling upon this board to divest our pensions from entities engaging in human rights violations, including the genocidal state of Israel. I spent a long time trying to decide which of the litany of atrocious war crimes I could bring up that might convince this body to take to take our calls for divestment seriously. But sadly, I am not sure that any amount of Palestinian suffering will cause this board to make the right choice, because that would require you for you to see the Palestinians as human beings. So instead, I'm going to talk about myself. I've lived in Minnesota my entire life. I love it here. It's my home. I'm often proud to call myself a Minnesotan, and I credit the late Paul Wellstone for my political awakening. It was he who taught me that government could be about more than money, power, and war, and that it could actually be used to make people's lives better. I credit my mother, a social worker for Hennepin County for over thirty years, who dedicated her life trying to ensure that children were not growing up in abusive homes. Those are the things that make me proud to be a Minnesotan. And I was proud when you, Governor Walz, signed a bill into law that ensures that no child will go hungry. So imagine my deep shame when I learned that the pension fund that I pay into every single week, the pension fund that is supporting my mother in her retirement after a lifetime of caring for children, is drenched in the blood of Palestinian children like Hind Raja. How can I be proud of the good we do here, like feeding children, if the money I earn is going to fund a man-made famine that has led to the severe acute malnutrition of nearly one in four children in Gaza? It is horrifying. There is no law that requires you to invest our pensions in Israeli bonds or companies like Albert Systems. Making these investments was a choice, and you can make a choice to divest from these. There are four people who sit on this board who have the power to make this choice, but instead you are choosing to keep Minnesotans complicit in this genocide. In the words of Paul Wellstone, "We all do better when we all do better," and I implore you, Governor Walz, to do better. Divest our pensions from Israel and stop forcing Minnesotans to have blood of Palestinians on their hand. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. At this time, please have Colm McCormick entered into the meeting. Colm McCormick, you are recognized.
Hello.
Please proceed.
Hello, my name is Colm McCormick. I'm with the Climate Justice Committee. First of all, we'd like to demand immediate divestment from Israeli bonds, creation of a task force to publicly assess the risks of investments in companies complicit in Israel's crimes, and commit to hold all future SBI meetings in person. As for the Climate Justice Committee's personal things, we'd like to point out that, first of all, there's a sit-in inside of the building for the demands at the moment. And I would like to say that if you are deliberate about what you invest in, as you said earlier in this meeting, that not only are you deliberately enabling an apartheid regime in the midst of an internationally recognized genocide, you are deliberately investing in things that contradict your stated goal of sustainability. This also contradicts Board Member Keith Ellison's own comments about how unacceptable it is to further Israel's crimes against Palestinians, crimes which he himself publicly acknowledges as a genocide. An important and deliberate part of Israel's genocide in Palestine is ecological destruction. By making our pensions dependent on ecological destruction in Palestine, the SBI is purging ecological destruction on a global scale. Methods of oppression or for the IDF, when you're accused of it, are then exported to the rest of the world, including the United States. The chokehold that killed George Floyd was created by the IDF after all, and the Minneapolis Police Department has done training exchanges with the IDF multiple times. Likewise, the border surveillance technology that Israel develops to suppress Palestinians' rights to free movement has already been implemented across our border with Mexico. Minnesota's complicity in enabling this border militarization goes against its stated values of further equality. Furthermore, as border militarization cuts through multiple biodiversity hotspots and further harms hundreds of already endangered species, it is even more hypocritical to value sustainability, but also invest in Israel. Lastly, I'd like to close by saying there is not a world in which the Minnesota State Board of Investment can remain consistent with its stated values of sustainability and equality while remaining invested in Israel. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. We will go back if we are able to allow Mr. David Coobs to enter.
Mr. Coobs has been admitted into the room. Mr. Coobs, you're currently muted.
Mr. Coobs, you are recognized. You have two minutes. Please proceed. We have one more opportunity, Mr. Coobs. Okay, well, technical issue on that one. That was all of our speakers. Is there any further discussion from the State Board of Investments before I call for a motion to adjourn? Hearing none, I would call for a motion to adjourn. And I'll call roll call vote. Otter Blaha.
Aye.
Attorney General Ellison.
Aye.
Secretary Simon. Once again, the secretary is with his child at the doctor, but we do have a quorum present, and I, Governor Walz, vote in favor of the motion. The ayes have it, the motion carries. This meeting of the State Board of Investments is adjourned. Thank you to everyone, and thank you to the administrators.